Well, it'd be nice if it never just stopped raining on a weekend. Hey, I'll call it a win. We had a five-year-old birthday party Sunday at the house with no rain.
Really? You're lucky.
Good.
Okay, we'll call the Monday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five Williamson Select Board Meeting to Order. First thing on the agenda is to pledge allegiance. Tyler, you want to lead us on for that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is set the agenda. Uh, does anyone have any, this is a revised one that's highlighted. There's a couple more things added to the bottom of it. Anybody else have anything to add or change on it?
Uh, I, I saw Jackie had put it on Facebook, but maybe talking about Beckett Street, that might be good just for the public.
I could just say that try to get a license plate next time so I can report them to the state, to the Orange County and the state police. I mean, people need to learn how to read the signs, so if we have to ticket them or track them down and get them reprimanded by the police, then that's about all we can do. I mean.
Well, it's a silver truck going the wrong way.
It's happened to me three times. Once I was, and I texted Jackie this, once I was on my Harley Davidson with my son. And he's only five now, he's almost six, and they almost hit me with a five-year-old on a motorcycle. The biggest thing I would say, because it has changed, um, is probably moving the, where they used to say one-way street, I mean, the poles are still there. But maybe wherever it is now a one-way street, because it is one-way part of the way.
It's one-way from fourteen to the Willey Dock.
So maybe put a one-way sign wherever those, so then people know it's deliberately one-way.
There's not one on the fence?
I do not know. I, I don't go down.
Yeah, there's one there.
Is there? I, I honestly don't go down that street very often.
I'll check.
Okay, that, that's all I could say is let's make sure it says one-way wherever it deliberately is a one-way street. To avoid a lot of people getting injured. And it's literally one of the, I would say one quarter of the part where we have a sidewalk in our town, roughly, so people do walk.
Okay, so don't need to put on your.
Nope, it's, I just want to make sure people are safe.
Could I have motion to accept the agenda as written?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion being second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right? Close? Okay, excited to do open public comments. There's a lemonade thing up there where you sign in, it tells how we run the meetings, if anybody's interested in looking at it. Any select board announcements? Any public announcements? Any commission committees, trustees, emergency servers, reports, or other board announcements? Dave, you want to?
How are you doing tonight?
Good.
I think I'm just about ready. I'm David, the airport, the American, the town of Barry. Overall, things have been going well. Uh, year-to-date, we've seen a little bit of a decline in nine-one-one calls in Williams Town area. A lot of that's attributed to the highway. Seems to be, uh, a little less busy up there in the first five months of this year. So year-to-date, we've done two hundred twelve calls, nine-one-one calls, which is about an eighteen percent decrease over last year at the same time. Like I said, the majority of those seem to be more physical responses last, the end of the winter and into the early summer, it was pretty busy up on the highway. Surprisingly, with the rain, normally we're busy on the highway, we haven't been, so people are just driving better now. But overall, it's been good. Jackie had a question for me last week about four responses in town. Fast Squad not getting toned, so I looked those out. Um, all, all four of those were exceptional last week. The first three were all cancellations or runs out of calls, so the crew got to turn them around very quickly. Um, and the crew that was here handled all four calls in that timeframe and didn't even end up spending any rest stations, so that's why there were no extra tones for any other resources. So if you guys do have things to top up, Jackie, should we need any on time, I can pretty quickly get that information. Yeah, overall, things have been going well. We got two new ambulances that are going in service, the ones that I told you about that we purchased last fall, so those will be going into service here. One's actually just got finished today, we gotta get it registered, get the state inspected, and then they'll start working on it all next week, so you'll see those rolling around. Another thing you'll be seeing, probably, you might have seen a little bit of it so far, it's dashed out of tatter about it. We purchased a hydrolytic simulation system that will be coming in July tenth, um, so maybe I'll break it down when we get it all set up, show you guys how it works. Uh, but it's for real-life simulations, um, to prepare our staff or keep our staff prepared for the next emergency all the time. We used to use UVM simulation labs that gets rather expensive, more so traveling, paying staff, they travel back for one hundred days, seven, fifteen people there. So the board, we had some surplus money, so we spent the hundred fifty-five thousand dollars to purchase this. So it'll be here in July. It'll be ours, so our staff can train on it all the time. It has a lot of capacity, a lot of capabilities, like, but when, um, can we get it all, then they have to come, it's about two days teaching us how to use it. I'll break it down, show you guys. Check it out, so. Yeah, nothing, it's been going well. Questions, thoughts, anything you guys need from us?
I did have a question. What's the average time now? I know in February it was like eight and a half minutes.
It's still, yeah, still running right around. I can give you the exact number, it's been anywhere between eight point two and eight point four, five minutes. From time to time on team.
I just told her I would find out.
I'm glad that things are going well. I mean, I've heard no complaints whatsoever from any residents.
Yeah, Jackie had one thing she brought up to me, something about a billing issue, and I told her, hey, welcome to have a person call me and I can, unless, if they're a patient, I can certainly go over it with them, um, but if they're not, I can't, it's got patients pathetic. There was, you know, some talk about how much the town covers EMS bills, which is nothing, that you pay sixty-five dollars per resident for the service to be here. But the town isn't responsible for any personal bills, but having clarified that, I didn't want to make that.
Yes, somebody had posted some inaccurate information on the Billtown chat page over the weekend, and I sat them straight and told them that I wouldn't be more than happy to make a copy of the contract for them, and also informed them that the other question was about rent from Berrytown EMS, and I said they've been paying rent since day one. I have all that information, information in my office, if somebody would like it, they're more than happy to, just let me know, and I will give it to them, so. I think it nipped him in the butt.
You'll get that. I, so I was more relating to the actual service, I have nobody to say that you guys are talking bad job or so far, so I think that's, that's good.
I have a few questions that someone called me today, um, so, and just throwing it out there, I'm soon to not even be a EMS provider in the state of Vermont, July one. Letting my licensure lapse in this state, uh, and not a member of the Fast Squad, uh, but this is what the resident asked. Uh, how many calls per month approximately does Berrytown EMS ambulance respond from either the Berrytown station or Berlin station to provide care in Williams Town per month of flat air?
So I didn't hold it, it's been averaging from one of the other stations?
Yeah.
Uh, the average for last year was four and a half.
Four and a half, okay.
Split calls, but, um, I can certainly give you, um, you know, last month's numbers, but.
Okay. And then, what was the next question they sent me? How many hours per month, again, it has, doesn't have to be spot-on. Is Berrytown EMS ambulance stationed in Williams Town utilized for non-emergency transports? Are these transfers Williams Town residents? And that, that was my question. The first question was the citizen. Uh, second is, does Berrytown ambulance come to cover Williams Town? Like, when we're doing essentially a non-emergency transfer, do we have one of the other Berrytown ambulances come and cover the town?
It depend, it depends on the timing, and if, you know, one of the trucks we have, if we have a coverage truck yet, if the South Berry truck is in service, they move to where our, whatever station, if the East Berry truck goes out, they'll move, if the Berlin truck goes out, they'll move. Um, if the Williams Town truck goes out, they'll move, um, like, 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 South Brixton off our way anyway. Coverage trucks sometime will come here. We don't necessarily track it to a, you know, to a minute, because trucks moving around is, it would, we probably could, it would be a fair amount of work to get specific, you know, timeframes, uh, because we have to take the time the truck was gone and get rid of all the emergency responses and then look at, you know, the time it was on, on other calls. As far as the, this truck transporting specific Williams Town residents on non-emergency transfers, we, there's a rotation, so it rotates amongst the three duty crews. Uh, we don't pull this truck to do local transfers. The only time this truck will leave here for transfers to do a semi-standby or something to UVM or whatever, but we don't pull this truck out of here, it's too far to take them up to hospital to just go to Woodbridge, which is point three miles, we're not gonna drive, you know, ten or twelve miles to, to take someone across the street. So the, the Berlin and East Berry trucks or the South Berry trucks handle those locals.
Okay. And then the third question they sent me is, why is the Williams Town Fast Squad not being dispatched when the Berrytown ambulance stationed here is? And I wrote, the person that was asking me this question, I tried to do the proper English here, um, is out of service, AKA caring for another patient.
So we can, we can revisit it, um, but the initial agreement last year with the Select Board was they would be toned if this truck was gone and the call was dispatched as a critical call. If it was a lift assist to the gardens, we're not gonna tone up the Fast Squad if the truck's coming from Berlin for a lift assist to the gardens, or if it's a non-emergency, you know, a non-life-threatening call, because, you know, this resident's been not feeling well for three or four days, and the doctor would like to transport her to the hospital, those have not been called, we routinely call the Fast Squad for. Because every time the Fast Squad gets done, it's, it's more money to the taxpayers.
Yeah.
So certainly something we can revisit if it's the, you know, the wishes of the board, uh, but it's only been times that there's been a, you know, a critical call that we would have helped the Fast Squad. And the truck, with the, obviously, the decrease in run volume a little bit, but the trucks have been here more, so they might, you have a ninety, those four calls, they got four.
And, and I also did reach out to Marie, just because I wanted to make sure. The only thing that she really said is, the Fast Squad is having a hard time. Like, I honestly am one of those members. Uh, I think the only thing that we ever got called to is to serve as lift assists. But a lot of people seem like just not getting treated, uh, unfairly is the right word, they're just not feeling like they're really, they don't feel needed, I guess that's the way. Like, I work in an emergency department, and the mantra of the emergency department I work in, every doctor and nurse says, we appreciate you. Every time I do something, any nurse, that is like the slogan. And it sounds like, according to, I'm assuming this is kind of from Marie, is a lot of people are not trying to join the Fast Squad because they don't feel like they're even being utilized at all.
Well, utilization and appreciation are on the other side of the world, so I couldn't thank anymore, I, I could appreciate people, but needing them and appreciating them are completely different spectacles, so I'm happy to talk about either one.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I.
When you have a full-time ambulance based in your town, the, the need for emergency response decreases significantly. Berrytown doesn't have a Fast Squad, Berlin has one, but they get called, you know, they, they do, so it's a pretty perspective. You know, Williams Town is five to six hundred runs a year, Berlin is a thousand and twelve hundred, and the Berlin Fast Squad goes on, you know, they, they get called a fair amount, but they don't go on that many calls. Again, they don't want to be toned for any medical facilities, any of that kind of stuff, because there's already medical staff there. So again, it's something we can certainly revisit, if you guys want to sit down and chat about it.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, like I said, unfortunately, my EMS licensure, twenty-two years doing it, is bye-bye in the state of Vermont anyway. But, and again, these are not questions I asked, this is a resident that contacted me. They just, I want to make sure that the people within our town are treated with dignity and respect, and I'm not saying Berrytown isn't doing that, but as a member of a service, I can certainly feel the way of people not feeling appreciated. I mean, even Williams Town, you know, when I was on Williams Town ambulance, sometimes you just don't feel like you're being treated respectfully. And if we have a Fast Squad, and we're losing people because of it, because they never, and I honestly don't know what their training is, anyone know what their training is? I didn't actually talk to Marie, so. I mean, in Williams Town ambulance, we had to do it once a month-ish. The fire department, we do it three times a month. I'm supposed to be there tonight, um, but we just want to make sure that, you know, our residents are safe.
Yeah, absolutely.
With regards to the Fast Squad, with all the initial meetings that, and the ones that set up, said roughly fifteen to twenty call, times a year, it's a very limited budget for it, so I don't, I don't know why, or if they're just not needed, like you said, they're not gonna be called unless they're needed. And that's, that was the intended thing to start with, so I think, there's a wish I'd make to make more out of it. It's not the original intent, it's not money enough to budget for, like, thirty, forty times a year type thing, so.
Yeah. The one thing I will say, and this is my career, as a career firefighter, and this was a joke, not a joke, but we went to a fall once, and my buddy's like, oh, we're going to a fall, and the person fell fifty five, fifty feet down in embankment. But that's how the dispatch came in. It didn't come in as someone fell fifty feet down in embankment, because unfortunately, nine-one-one does not work. You know, and trust me, I went to a lot of nursing homes in my career, too, for a cardiac arrest, and it was just the patient had a cardiac arrest, if they, they, we would do CPR on them. They had, they just wouldn't eat or something, you know what I mean? That nine-one-one is kind of a, I'm sure you can agree on that, sometimes nine-one-one calls are, what we hear versus what we actually see is polar opposites, so that's kind of the hard thing.
No, we do the best we can with the information we get, you know, there's, there's, you know, there's gonna be calls split through the cracks, and there's gonna be calls where the Fast Squad may get called, it's like, oh, well, it was a lift assist, or it was, nobody was there, you know, the classic ones are the slumped over the wheel parking lot of a sore, and then somebody gets there, there's no cars in the parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I would say traditionally for the fire department, uh, in the middle of winter, we go to multiple car accidents on I-89. And by the time we go up, the car is gone, because someone just slid off the road. But I just, yeah, I don't know, maybe, maybe this is bringing up the Select Board, maybe we have Marie come, but I did contact her, I think she's just working today. And maybe try to figure out what the solution is, because if we have people interested in the Fast Squad, I mean, I, I want to make sure that people are safe in our town, that's.
I mean, I don't know about Williams Town typically, but I can tell you that across the state, across the nation, volunteer services are on the decline. People don't have time to volunteer anymore, um, so if they're not, if there's not a consistent schedule that they can be paid for, they're not gonna do it. And Cabot ran this years ago, so they came up with a schedule and said, okay, we'll pay you thirty, forty, fifty dollars a day to be on call. And so then people who's consumption, the people that are, you know, here, if they, you know, they get paid a small hourly wage, but it's like, well, if there's no calls, I'll put the point in me, put my day on reserve to, for nothing, um, so it's a struggle.
Try to get, you know, oh, if you're going to school to be a nurse, maybe you should join the ambulance. You know, it's it's hard to get anybody interested. Anybody, I think you'd have to still grab them when they're, yeah, fifteen, sixteen. Start them out and then they can try it and like it, stop it down. But they like it, they look forward, you know, I think. You got to start them young and it's it's hard to find somebody off the street saying, hey, I really wish I was on the ambulance or I really wish I was, you know, but like you said, time, I think that's time. Murray, I don't know, shouldn't I have any time between work and Emmy and personal life? I should have that when he dies, so, you know, but.
And part of it is, you know, it's outsourcing of jobs, like a lot of local jobs, like, you know, these are a lot of people used to that work local and used to do that stuff and, you know, we, we have, when I first came very, we had a thirty mile, we had to live with thirty miles of very town. We weren't there full time, we had to move it out to sixty because it's just the people weren't there. Um, and we pay, I mean, twenty year pension and our, our salaries range from sixty-five, a hundred, five thousand dollars a year, but they're good jobs and it's still can be a challenge for her.
And our budget's only twelve thousand dollars for the fast squad.
Yeah, yeah, I, again, this is just someone called me and asked.
I mean, the twenty to twenty-five calls a year was a guesstimate when we, when we started the fast slide. And we had no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just know historically being a, you know, my career was a firefighter and legitimately the hard thing. Dispatch works to an extent. But, you know, once when I was a career guy, I brought the defibrillator up, we got called to a nursing home. And I brought all of our gear up, I think it was six floors, don't, don't quote me, but it was super high. And the patient was in cardiac arrest, didn't come in as a cardiac arrest. And the paramedic that was working with me, he's like, hey, how did you know to do that? Like, because unfortunately, I've been in a situation where it came at as, oh, someone's got a sore throat and we go in and they're in cardiac arrest, so it's better to have all your stuff than have to run down six floors to go get it. And trust me, COVID hit my whole department quite hard, so. But no, and I agree, I started in Marytown as, no one knows that, that's where I actually started, Marytown EMS Explorer. That's how I started in EMS. Even though I grew up, born and raised. Yeah, Barb was my, she helped me get my ECA way back when.
Does anyone else have any questions for Dave?
Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Yes.
You guys haven't had any mission.
You get the first one or no? We had, back in the winter, we had one each on a snow rope, but it was windy and snowy.
No, I know, I was up there six, yeah, last over here for four and a half hours.
Yeah, so.
Well, thank you for coming in and giving us something, appreciate it.
And when I, when, like I said, we'll get the, our new system and so maybe September I'll come down with it and you guys can check it out. Pretty excited about it.
Okay, then we're going to approve of the warrants, SB twenty-two, one-four-six, one-four-seven, and one-four-eight. Does anybody have some say in this or?
The only question is for twenty-two, one-forty-six, the Halloween declaration is for the fast squad, not the fire department isn't involved in that at all. It says fast squad on it, so.
She probably just coded it wrong, I mean, she probably just put the memo in wrong, but it is for the fast slide.
Okay, so.
That's where the money came.
Yeah, so that doesn't, okay, I'm not on the fast ones, that doesn't bother me.
Okay, now, motion to approve the warrants.
Make motion.
Okay, in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, next item is payroll warrants.
Okay, Cody's on one and Tyler's on the other.
Very good.
Okay. So, which one is what?
I'm, I'm five eighteen.
Tyler's on six one.
So I can vote for, I can vote for five eighteen, he can vote for six one.
First, I have the motion to approve of warrant, uh, payroll warrant for five eighteen.
I make motion to approve.
Motion being seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Now, I need a motion on six one.
Make the motion to approve the payroll on six one, twenty, twenty-five.
Second that.
Motion being seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next, uh, item is to approve a second word, eight minutes for five twelve, kind of motion on that?
Take the motion.
Motion seconded? Motion being seconded? Anybody having discussion on that? I guess, actually, I do have something on that. There's a wording on the thing about, uh, Clark Road reclassification. This is a Clark Road hearing. Clayton LeWorth read the following proposal, if the all legal doggers are not in place for the turnaround area. There's supposed to be a place like, or including documents that tell that it's not responsible for any segment. Well, they reclassified as Class Four Highway in July forty-six. On that, since we completed, I brought the town manager's office, I go for, like, making those discussions. Yeah, that's good, please, just I read it wrong the first time. How's that going?
Okay, everybody has signed for this certified letter. But I have not heard a word from anybody but Rob Farrell. Because he, um, because I emailed Rob his second springs and then it went certified to HCC, the main headquarters. And, um, it's actually in my, my town, my manager's report that, um, second spring signed theirs on five twenty-one and Lucky signed for his on five twenty-two. But nothing, I had no correspondence from him.
So no word from Bob Chappell or?
No word.
As of last week, nobody has approached Bob Chappell.
Yeah.
So he knows what the alternative is, we've messed with it, love, we're gonna.
Five years.
Okay. Anybody else have any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Next item is town manager's report. Jackie?
Okay, we have more, one more week on the greater rental. Um, and then we should have got all the roads done by the end of this week. New road is working great, all the roads have been rolled up, the grading are holding up really well. The federal highway, um, payment has been received of seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. That was the theme of pullback for Granite Hill Road and I had to reapply through the Federal Highway Administration. Uh, we actually received roughly eight thousand dollars more from the Federal Highway Department than we did from FEMA, so in the long run, it worked out. Still waiting on the paving grant, um, response from AOT and still waiting on the Henry Road culvert replacement structures grant from AOT. The FEMA buyout for the Meadow Street property, I had my kickoff meeting with the state and FEMA on May twenty-eighth, everything is moving forward. I actually met with the, uh, appraiser for FEMA at five o'clock today before the meeting. Uh, that all went well, we went in, heated the upstairs, downstairs basement, took pictures. The assessment will be to the State Department, um, probably within thirty days. And once they reviewed it and are okay with it, it will go to FEMA's legal department and then they will draft the proposal for the buyout amount to Ross Derry for his review. And he has, I think he has thirty days to, uh, accept it. And then once he accepts it, then they will move on to doing the asbestos testing in the house and the mobile home. And they will do the, uh, put the bid out for demolition. And then we move on from there, so if everything goes well, hopefully by mid to late fall, that should be a grassed in area, if everything goes well. Kathy Brunel has started as the town assessor, her office hours will be from nine to two on Wednesdays. Uh, to start, Gordon, Murray, and Bill Peabody are holding the grievances for the April first grant list on June twenty-third and twenty-fourth to close that out, so we will have the figures for the tax rate at the July select board meeting. Once they're done with the grievances and that's been set, then, um, they will no longer be, uh, under town employees. Technically, they're no longer listers, but they have to finish out, um, the process for the April first grant list. And Kathy, she will be in, she'll have office hours from nine to two. Mae is her assistant and is doing the day-to-day and calling Kathy, you know, throughout the week if she has any questions with anything. Gordy is going to assist and possibly bill with, um, the drive-arounds to, for the reappraisal. They would be hired on under the appraisal as, um, town employees and work with Kathy and her two other people plus Ted Nelson from Roar Appraisals, so they'll, they'll start that process in the fall. The transfer station, thanks to Dave and the road crew, all of Don Drew's trailers and miscellaneous items that were still down there are all gone. So that's all been cleaned up. The new cameras are down there that the, uh, the new owner of the transfer station has set up because we were having some issues with people, um, coming in and just dumping stuff in there, so he has. I would advise that they'll be going there and doing illegal dumping when the transfer station's not open. We, the town of Williamson, Orange, Washington, and Northfield have signed our propane and heating oil contract with Gillespie, uh, starting July one of twenty-twenty-five. Oil will be at two forty-five per gallon and propane will be a dollar fifty-one per gallon. This is a joint contract that all the towns and school districts, um, do together, so we got our, uh, CBTV will be running the select board meetings, so you make sure you tell mom that starting Thursdays, they will be running the Williamson Select Board Meetings on CBTV at eight AM, one PM, and six PM on Thursdays.
Eight AM.
One PM and six PM on Thursdays. So once the, the drop box is done here, he will pull it off on Wednesday and get it all set up for Thursday morning.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yep. I met with the dog ordinance committee today, um, at three o'clock, we're working towards the draft ordinance. They had several questions for me that I, um, had to investigate, I called different towns, uh, city, Montpelier, and a couple of other towns in regards to, um, I also discussed it with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns attorneys. What we would like to do is, um, request that rescues, kennels, and boarders, um, have a permit with the town. And we would like to, um, set an amount of dogs that an owner can own. The only issue is, is the town of Montpelier has that in their town, but it goes to the zoning administrator. So we are going to try to draft up some form, small form of zoning, I know people in this town hate zoning, but, in order to regulate, um, these businesses in town, I mean, right now, we only have one that we have an issue with. It has, it's a form of zoning. So we are going to draft up something, run it by the attorneys and, and BLCT for their input and then bring it before the board along with the, um, updated ordinance. We've got some other issues that we want to include in that, which would be nuisance, negligent owners of, because we have nuisance dogs and a definition in there, but we also have negligent owners where their dogs are constantly getting out and, you know, some of them are aggressive and, you know, some of the neighbors are concerned for their safety and their animal safety. So we are working towards that, so hopefully we'll be able to have something drafted into you, um, by this fall. The draft ordinance is almost done, we just have to put in the negligent, definition of a negligent owner and.
I think, um, just for suggestion, they'd like, some people have hot dogs and they have.
No, we, we've taken that in consideration, like the bear dogs or rabbit dogs and that sort of thing. But you can still limit the amount of animals that they have, you know, anywhere from fifteen to twenty adult dogs. You know, we, we, even breeders don't have, you know, that many dogs. But if you're licensing forty-four dogs in your name, I mean.
When you said permit, did you get permit now? And when they pay you the permit, that, that fee is up to ten dogs and any dog after ten is three dollars plus another dog. So, so say you have fifty dogs, it's going to be the fee, which is twenty-five dollars up to ten dogs and then three times.
Right, but Montpelier has a, it's a different kind of a permit that goes through the zoning administrator in their town that regulates, um, orders, not necessarily kennels, but borders, rescues, that sort of thing. I mean, you could have fifteen of your own or ten of your own dogs. That's fine, but anything above and beyond that, if you hold, if you have a business. So.
So you're talking to somebody that has twenty personal dogs, they're all good?
Well, that's what, that's, we have to run all of this by an attorney to make sure that everything is legal and but Montpelier does have that form of a permit above and beyond your regular permit. I called their zoning administrator last Wednesday and talked to her. And she was going to be sending me down some information on how that came into play and why that came into play, of course. Montpelier's also got different zones in there, you know, they've got the residential area, they've got waterfront area, you know, they've got different zones. Their, um, their zoning is huge up there, we're just looking for something that can help us regulate animal control in town. So.
Did you think to check with her gyms, because that's where she came from, she got kicked out of her gym.
Bearsburg, the reason she got kicked out of Bearsburg was because of the rats.
Oh, okay.
And that's how they got her under their zoning, and that's how they got her on their zoning, because she had a very close neighbor that all of the rats were actually cuddling onto her neighbor's property, where.
So it wasn't an actual airport ordinance?
No, it was, no.
Hell, of course.
So, is it right now, because I know there's been stuff, legislation, stuff going through the state as far as like complaints and negligence or whatever, but right now, is it in Williamson, we have no way of controlling if somebody wants to open a shelter or whatever? We have no control over it, is that, that's how it is now?
Right, okay. Well, then, uh, in, instead of using the word zoning, which is evil, could be, it be written as an ordinance?
No, I checked with BLCT's attorneys, it cannot be an ordinance, that has to be, that's a form of, this is a form of zoning. Not all zoning is bad, I live in a town of zoning, I live in a town, Berkshire has a population of nine hundred people and we have three zoned districts in Berkshire. And zoning, it's not all that, I'm not going to tell you that you can't paint your house pink. I just want to control the issues that we're having with.
I, I, I agree, I agree.
And it falls under the zoning guidelines, not under an ordinance guideline, unfortunately.
So unfortunate that one situation is leading to all this, I have a hard time believing it. But Montpelier has a place that's going to work well in Williamson, but.
Well, I'm not saying it's going to, but.
We wouldn't look at it.
But she's, but she's going to send it down to me, because as of right now, that's the one which says in their dog ordinance that they have to apply for a permit through the zoning administrator, so they're tied together.
So to have any kind of dog ordinances or inordinances, we have to have the zoning?
No, we have a dog ordinance.
Okay.
We, we've had a dog ordinance for many, many, many years.
Then all that can happen is we give it.
But we can't, and we're, we've issued her five tickets in the last four months.
Okay.
She's at her, she's.
Right, early in litigation right now.
So when, when you issue a ticket under the judicial system for animal violations, they have, the person has twenty-one days to either file for a hearing or pay the ticket.
Hearing with us or with like a court?
With White River.
Okay.
White River judicial system. If they do not file within that twenty-one days, then the judicial system will send those to a collection agency. The collection agency has a certain timeframe to collect. If the person does not pay the collection agency, then it is brought back to the judicial, judicial system and they can issue a warrant for the, it's just like with unpaid speeding tickets or parking tickets or, or whatever. They can issue a warrant for that person's arrest. So right now, she has five tickets, she's been issued five, five tickets. Three of them have already gone beyond the twenty-one days, so now they're in the collection agency phase. She has gone, you know, the waiver fees when you issue your first offense, second offense, third offense, fourth offense, fifth offense. Well, she's in a five hundred dollar BAAM ticket from here on out per our dog ordinance. But that's all we can do.
The same one as the animal cruelty issues going on with?
Yes, there's two counts of animal cruelty against her, the hearing, the next hearing is July, huh?
Is that litigation?
That, the next hearing is July thirtieth at Orange County Courthouse. She, she has, she, she's been charged with two counts of.
Maybe we shouldn't be discussing too much about it until this is done.
Well, I mean, the, the, the July, the July hearing, it's public record, anybody can go to the courthouse and get it. But she's been, she's been charged with two counts of animal cruelty and it's, it's in the court system right now.
I think we should just leave it at that for now, not get the wage too far.
But just so you know, that's what we're working on with the, with the, I mean, they were charged to rewrite the dog ordinance.
Yes, this question, because obviously I was sort of part of that as a select board member, but since my surgery, I have not seen them and I wrote to them. So moving forward with this, should I abstain from anything? What would be the best?
Are, you have resigned from the committee, correct?
Well, I sort of, I don't, I said, do you need me? And I said, we've been working diligently essentially since I was out on medical leave. So I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm fine with abstaining, I just want to make sure I'm doing things correctly.
You can abstain, I mean, if you, if you.
I don't know what they.
Formerly, you haven't formally resigned, if you formally resigned from the board, from the committee, then you're allowed to vote on anything, because you're not part of it anymore.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know if I was allowed to resign, to be quite honest. So, no, I essentially haven't been helping them because they've, they were working very diligent without me, so.
I don't see any conflict of interest, it's just a committee, it ain't like.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure I follow the law, that's, that's all I'm saying, okay, just want to make sure, yeah, don't worry, I will not have twenty dogs, I have one.
They, they, you know, they, they sent me a bunch of questions and I found the answers for them and I met with them today and this is our next step forward.
I mean, I guess, I kind of, at the moment with that stuff going on with her already, I kind of agree with Larry, just wait to see how that plays out. But not that it's not a bad idea to get this information, so we have, okay, if things don't work out, we have this rep.
Well, the thing is, that's pigs, this is.
Oh, dogs, okay.
So it's two completely separate, pigs are large animals.
Yeah.
So they're actually under two different.
And there's.
Large animals are under.
Well, pigs can be kind of nuisance too if they run all over basically.
No, no, I realize that, I'm just saying.
I'm thinking we make, make sense as we make a covering basis.
The, the dog, the animal ordinance doesn't cover large animals.
But could, like, if, if she gets charged with this, can't the court, court say, okay, you're no longer allowed to be a haven or whatever? Could they do that or?
No.
And what are they charging her with and what is with the?
She's charged with two counts of animal cruelty, two pigs.
But then what, what's the consequence, like what?
She won't get her pigs back.
But that's it, she just doesn't get her pigs back?
No. They, I mean, they have to proceed with the next, if there's going to be a next phase to go.
The pigs are living good right now, they don't want to go back.
Yeah, they're getting high on the hog now, no one is paying them.
No.
Anyway, I don't think we should just, yeah, they waived that subject for now until this, that legal stuff is over.
Yeah, because it's on, it's on the agenda further down the line, I think, but.
Anybody have any, you're all done?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions for Jackie?
The last question I had was just the FEMA buyout stuff, the squatters, where we're at with them.
Uh, that's going to get stuff discussed under litigation.
Okay.
Okay, now we're on to business, you got to get hold of Andreas.
Yep, I can call it right now.
Andreas, the engineer for this little motor stuff.
We're just, we're just saying this larger.
Hey, it's Jackie, I've got you on speaker.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, Andreas, this is Larry.
Hey, Larry, how are you?
Good, probably the first thing you should do is got to walk us through this plan, so everybody's familiar with the pictures and stuff yet.
Yep, so, um, I'm looking at the plan, it's got three different windows, it's got three management areas on it. So is that what you guys are looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, so, management area one is, uh, adjacent to Route fourteen, right, so that's Route fourteen, that's, you know, you can see there, so it's right, right near the right of way at Route fourteen. And there's kind of these three different systems in there, one A, one B, and one C, so those are our, these are storm tech chambers, um, they're underground, plastic chambers. And so they would sit in the grass, we've kind of got them configured the way we do to avoid existing trees and just to kind of fit into the space better because they're modular. And so, you know, these would be excavated, they'd be buried, and then basically the grass would be restored up on top. And there's a couple different ways that the water gets in them, you can see on each one of the systems, there's like these round circles, um, on either end, so those are catch basins, just like a normal catch basin. So basically the water goes in and it fills up the chamber, um, and then basically will just flood back out if the chamber is, um, you know, if this, if this, if the capacity is maxed and the whole thing gets filled up, the water would just flood back out onto the grass, so there's no pipes essentially that are connecting it, you know, anywhere else, so we thought that this would be kind of the cheapest, you know, simplest solution for, for the site. So, yeah, it's, it's intended to take the, you know, the parking lot and, um, I don't know the name of the businesses there, you, you, you would know the, the ones to, directly to the east essentially, but that's, you know, that's the area that it's supposed to take is the. you know, that's the area that it's supposed to take, is the large parking lot right there in the backside of the roof. Um, of the pump and pantry and then of the other building as well, just to the east there.
It used to be a, the collection agency, but now it's apartment house. That's, that's the location that you're looking at right now.
Okay. Um, yeah, so that's, so that's management area one, management area two is, um, is basically right on the, it would be the west edge of the den, um, parking lot, so that's directly across from the Snowy Old Club on the south side of the road. Um, and so that is also a, the same kind of a system, it's a storm tech chamber system. Um, that one is gonna be a little different, it's not shown on this plan that we have, but we did just do a test pit out there, um, recently, a few days ago, and the soils over there are not that great, so it's, it won't function as the other one that I just described will, it will need a drain at the bottom of it to basically collect, collect the water and then, uh, discharge the water back out, and because of that, the footprint that's shown right there is gonna be a little different, it's, we're gonna use basically the smaller sized chamber systems, which are not as tall, and they allow you to get a little more vertical, um, elevation to work with, and so the footprint's gonna be bigger than what's shown on that plan, but essentially it's gonna be the exact same thing, it'll be underground. Um, part of the parking lot will need to be pulled up, but that, that will, that can be repaved under the parking lot. Um, then again, this has the inlets on either side, you can see, so the water basically goes in, um, on either side there, on the, on either end of it. Um, so that's the second area, and then the, the third area is actually at the, the apartments. Um, and it, I know when you're looking at the plan, it, it kind of looks the same as the chambers, but the third area is actually like a planted rain garden. Uh, but, but underneath the planted rain garden are these cubes that are, and that's what's shown kind of in that rectangular area, so these are, this, this, this is what's called this focal point system, and it's, it's basically like a, a pretty fab rain garden that you can get, and it's got all the pieces together, it's got the soil in it, it kind of comes in a box. And the way that, the reason that, that, that we're using that is actually the state has approved these to be much smaller than if you were to just design a conventional system, so we can make it, you know, much lower impact in terms of like how big it needs to be on the landscape. Um, so it kind of talks into the, the soil there on the edge of the, the parking lot, and you can see there's a need for a long drain that's gonna run out, um, to the wetlands, basically to the, uh, to the west, um, to the north of the apartments. So, those are the three, um, those are the three sites, you know, that we have for the compliance, um. I did also look, Larry, we looked at the, you know, the inside of the, the curve that we, that we met outside about, and it's, the, the, with the wetland buffer there, the, the space is really limited, and so we just can't get enough storage to make it useful for us, and, um, it, it, I think what I would suggest, I know, you know, that basically the way that this would, is, will, will work is, um, we need to submit, we need to basically have an application to the state incomplete by the end of September of this year, and that's because your, the grant funds that you, that the town got from the state requires that, they don't run out in September, they're actually good for another year until September twenty twenty-six. But the state has set this deadline to have the grant funded projects all into the state, because they want a year basically to review all of them. So, so we, we're kind of getting down to the wire in terms of the time. Um, so I was gonna just suggest to the town that we kind of just move ahead. You know, we get things in, nothing is gonna need to be built, you know, within five years. And, and it may actually end up being longer, but, you know, if the permit, if, if things kind of change in the future, whatever, there's always the opportunity for amendment, um, if needed, um, so that would be my suggestion, is just to try to, try to move forward and get that complete application in, so that you're good with your, with your grant funds, um, by September.
We've dealt with these type, type of systems before, they're, they were, I mean, they're, this is probably about as reasonable as I can think of that you could do for something around here, but. The, the whole thing is really, it's probably fine for some areas, but out behind like the Dollar General and the Snow machine clubhouse, there's fourteen acres of grassland out there that water can run into and the brook is run right out to the middle of it, so it isn't like, you know, it's correctly going into the brook, so. So the whole thing is really foolish as far as I'm concerned, but it's, it's one of these deals, you force it down your throat, so. You're gonna have to do something, so.
Is the purpose of this to collect runoff and try and like filter the stuff before it gets into the waterways?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. Yeah, and unfortunately, what Larry was saying, I mean, the whole, you know, there's a lot of regulated wetland area around here that's already classified as state wetlands and state wetland buffer, which is the fifty feet from the actual wetland edge. And because of that, like, there's just really limited, you know, we can't do anything. We can't do any improvements within those wetland areas at all, so we're kind of, we're kind of stuck just working like in the open areas around the site. Um, yeah, so.
Have you calculated the application fee yet?
Um, so I haven't calculated the application fee, I can get that to you, I can probably get that to you actually tomorrow though, um, I should, I should have come with that. That will be covered under your grant though, however, um.
Under the forty-nine thousand?
Correct, correct, like, so nineteen thousand of that, forty-nine thousand is earmarked for the actual fee. So when we submit this to state. They basically take the fee, yeah, they'll, they'll take that, you know, whatever your fee is, it's gonna be somewhere around, it's like a thousand dollars per acre, so I think it's like six acres, so it's like somewhere around six thousand bucks. But you won't even have to front that, they just like, they'll just apply it.
Okay, well, I'm just curious, because I've done my calculations of what I've got left in my ARPA money that has to be spent and my grant money for Business Center and for Industry, so, um.
So do, do we have a total cost for this, the town having to control it, or they're just gonna design?
It's just a design.
I mean, we've allocated, we allocated a hundred fifty thousand dollars towards the three acre stormwater, so that money physically could go into a reserve account to be used for food jerk.
So we don't have to spend it like?
No, it has to go into an account, because we've allocated it, so we just put it into uh, an account, so I have a hundred nineteen thousand dollars left in that fund, that's why I was wondering what this.
So what?
If I was gonna have to calculate money out of that towards this permit, um, but it looks like the forty-nine thousand dollar grant is gonna cover that portion of it.
So when's that deadline come up for that allocation having to be?
Um, everything has to be, well, everything had to be allocated by December of twenty twenty-four, but spent by twenty twenty-six. But we can, it would be like giving the money to Leamstown Lea Sports. We gave them their ninety-eight thousand dollars before they bought the light, so it was allocated and submitted, so we can take this money and put it into a reserve account for.
That counts as spending.
Yeah.
So, so we should be voting on something?
Well, you've already, you've already voted.
We voted, but I mean, as I.
So I just have to have Jen open a reserve account for it.
So it'll cover us, it'll be done whenever, then?
Yeah, I was wondering if I was gonna need some of this money for that.
So the state's forcing towns to do this and then saying, oh yeah, and then you gotta pay us twenty thousand dollars just to do it?
Yeah.
But then, I, way I'm taking it, they can approve or not approve that, and they're still gonna just take the money anyhow.
Bingo.
That's ridiculous. Okay, I'm, I'm right, I'm right on it, okay, then.
They're taking the money out of one pot, giving it back, then they can take it back.
That's right.
Yeah.
But the grant we're getting from the state or?
Yeah, forty-nine thousand dollar grant from the state for Business Center and for forty-nine thousand for Industry, but they're automatically taking out their permit out of that grant money.
Yeah.
Yes, oh, you're just, you're just relatively fresh here.
Yeah. My guess is they got a federal grant and they took that money, not spent it by certain times, they
Right.
Did this thing, now they're gonna figure out ways, so they can take it back.
Okay, so what if we actually, are we making a decision on, on this?
We already have, we need to.
And, and.
Go ahead and file the permit.
That's, that's what I'm getting at.
So do we have to, somebody make a motion that we're good with these plans as you've amended a little bit and he's good to file or?
Yes, okay, that's what I was getting at, I will make that.
I'll make that motion that, uh, they go ahead with these plans as he has amended a little bit and go ahead and file.
I'll second that motion.
Well, it's being seconded. Any further discussion? You have any more to add to this, Andreas?
Um, not, not this one, I wanna talk about the, the other industry for a second.
Okay, let's, let's, so, this one first, then we'll go on to that. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Okay, on to industry.
All right, so industry I think is a little, is a little simpler, so, um, as you, as you all probably know, that whole thing is, is like right in a well and great. So, it's, it's very low and it's very wet. Um, and because of that, you know, basically the way that the state rules work is that the state gives you an out to do the treatment that, you know, to comply with the rules if you can prove that you have complications on the site, and so things like, um, utility conflicts or, you know, impacts to existing natural resources like regulated wetlands and streams, those types of things are things that the state does not require you to do, uh, to meet the stormwater rules. And so, you, you basically have to go through, like, what's called this feasibility analysis, engineering feasibility analysis. It's kind of like a narrative report that kind of proves to the state that you can't do, you can't meet the, meet the rules. So, we've done a bunch of existing analysis out there, and I really think that you, you know, you, that you cannot meet the rules on that site without somehow violating this, you know, the standards that they've set, and so what that means is that, you know, if, if the town was, you know, approves of us going ahead, basically I would prepare the application and, and propose to the state that, you know, really nothing is done on this site from a treatment perspective. And if I'm successful, it has to go and get reviewed and approved, and they're, they're sticky with it, but if they approve it, then basically you would be allowed to pay an impact fee to the state, and the impact fee to the state is a one-time payment to the state, and then you're kind of off the hook, you still need to get, get a permit, but you don't need to do any physical improvements, and so the impact fee, although it's a lot of money, it's gonna be way less than um, what would be required if you had to fully meet the standards. So I calculated the impact fee, and the impact fee is sixty, sixty-three thousand dollars, plus or minus. Um, so, that would be a one-time fee that you would pay, and I, I'm not exactly sure when you would pay it, I think you would pay it, you know, once everything is reviewed and approved. You know, I would say probably later next year would be the time that you would have to pay the state, um, that, that fee, so it's sixty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars, seventy-seven cents. Um, and then you don't need to do anything else, so it's actually the best deal for the town, because, you know, you don't have to maintain anything, you, you don't have to do, you don't have to implement right away, so, um, it's kind of the best course of, of action, but it's, you know, it's still a lot of money, so.
So how much of that forty-nine thousand dollar grant can we use towards the impact fee?
So I don't think, I don't think you actually can use it, um.
All right.
What you can use, yeah, what you can use is you can use that same grant to pay the application fee, which is separate than the impact fee, so again, that's gonna be like six, seven thousand dollar fee that you, that you're not gonna have to pay, because the grant will pay that. But I don't think that they will, I could certainly ask, because this hasn't come up yet, I could definitely ask, um, that would, that's a, that would be a good question, I could, I'll, I'll ask that for sure, but I don't think that you can.
Okay.
So, so the grant we can use towards application fees, can we, can we use toward, towards the, the work that needs to be done over by pump and pantry, or it can only be used towards like administration stuff?
So.
So part of, part of it is paying our fees, so our design and engineering fees, basically thirty thou, so that the grant is for forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, so thirty thousand of that is for the engineering design, so we can, I can help submit our invoices to the state, and then you guys can get reimbursed once we get this application up, up to thirty, up to thirty grand, and then the remaining nineteen is just reserved for the application fee, so like, if your application fee is like seven thousand bucks, you can't, that, you, you, you can't spend the total forty-nine-nine, you can only spend, you know, thirty thousand plus another seven thousand for the, uh, to be reimbursed by, for, for the application fee, seventy-seven cents.
So it's up to forty-nine-nine.
Yep.
You only get what you spent, up to that amount.
So that forty-nine-nine includes both projects?
No, there's two separate ones.
Two separate ones?
Yep.
There's one for the forty-nine-nine for Business Center, forty-nine-nine for Industry.
There should be enough to take care of you and the permit fees on both projects out of the grant, right? Andreas? Yours is thirty, they got forty-nine, the fee's seven. All my years, Leamstown University, I think we adds up, what's this?
Is it seven, is the, is the application fees like six or seven grand per site or for both sites?
Per site.
Per site.
Per site, so you're looking at.
Four thousand.
So we got forty-nine and we're looking at between you and the fees, like thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand, so it should be enough to do it.
We've already spent thirty-one thousand dollars in.
Design?
Design.
Right.
I'm like, cause I had a hundred fifty thousand was allocated in ARPA, and I've spent thirty-one thousand, plus or minus.
But we're gonna get, gonna get reimbursed.
We're gonna get reimbursed for that, but we don't have to put that back in. If we use the ARPA money, then we can put that money into the reserve account that we're getting reimbursed to go towards future project for Business Center. If we don't have to do anything on Industry, then we can get reimbursed from the state for the engineering and put it in our reserve account for future.
Yep.
We can move it all, roll it all into one, that way.
Okay, but that's gonna, well, the sixty-five thousand dollar, um, fee or whatever to the state for not being able to comply to their rules that we already, they already put in place.
Right, but, but we've allocated a hundred fifty thousand dollars from ARPA, we've spent thirty-one thousand dollars on engineering, which we're gonna get paid back for, and then we can take the sixty-five, whatever, sixty-three, seven thirty-nine out of the ARPA money to pay the impact fee.
Right, but now am I?
So it's not technically gonna cost anything to the taxpayers?
Okay, no, no, that's fine, well, I would, there was like a question, and after like five years down the road, when they come back and say, okay, well, you've really gotta do something with that.
Well, I mean.
Can they come back on the town later on down the road saying, okay, you paid the impact fee for now, but we're gonna come back with something else?
We already have.
Yeah.
All these projects, both these prizes were permitted and all the fees paid way back at the time.
Right.
Then they changed the wetland boundaries regulations between now, between now and back when it happened, and they come up with all these other things on top of it, between now and when it happened, it was all fine when it, when it was done.
Right.
Everything was.
No, I, I, I agree, I'm just.
Aren't they in the process of changing the wetland boundaries again right now?
That's what I'm getting at, they're gonna change again after we pay that impact fee.
Sliding keeps happening, so.
So, that's, it's gonna turn around and come back again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the permit, the permit terms are good for five years, and like, yes, and there's no guarantee that, you know. Yeah, I mean, the permit, the permit terms are good for five years and like, yes, there's no guarantee that, you know, things might not change.
Right, that's what I'm getting at, after that five years, they have to come back and try it again. Alright, I was making sure that I was reading that right.
Yeah, but it seems like if the, on, uh, Business, not Business Center, but the other row.
Industry.
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 If we pay the cheaper amount now and just to.
If they approve it.
Yeah, if they approve it, I guess that'd be the question, if they don't approve it, then what line do we go there?
Right, it's a sixty-three thousand dollar bandage for five years.
I can tell you that with the guys at Industry Street, that it, back at the time with the reg, the regulations are a lot less restrictive for our setbacks. Everything's built right for max and there is not, there's no way to put anything.
Now.
Unless you do some underground like, we do it in the parking lot by the den or something like that. But the, you know, the water table and stuff is higher there, higher there it is up here.
Higher up with businesses, hopefully.
You're very limited to what you can do down there, so I, I would agree with him on being one-time fee, hopefully one-time fee.
Right, right, no, that's, I, I, I agree, that's the way to go, I just, just realistically, five years down the road, maybe handle this again.
Another one-time fee.
It's okay, I'm just, just making sure that, whatever was that?
It's frustrating because everything, we spent all kinds of money for permits and engineering and everything to do these projects, do them the way they wanna. So then they change things down the road, make you do it all over again, or towns do it all over again, it's just.
Just be a pessimist here, I'm just curious, is Montpelier the one that does this for us, makes the rules?
This is legislation stuff, yeah.
Yeah, would you take all around the rest of the town?
Well, I'm just, my mother was in, worked a lot for possible, brought a new one once, so.
You take anything around town that didn't have to go through Act two fifty, so they had no record of it, like all the village area and stuff. Way more runoff than this has. Nothing, you ain't gotta do nothing to that, right Andreas?
Yeah.
So ain't nothing, there's no, there's nothing right about this whole deal, I'll tell you.
Yeah.
And it really irritates me to know, and we don't, we don't have better people in Montpelier to figure this out on their own, but this is what it is.
I know, I know.
I know, my TV, they hear me, I really don't care.
Yeah, well, it sounds like we need to get hold of our representatives. Um, so I'll, I'll make a motion for this, the Industry Street one, that you go ahead and file for the one-time fee of not doing anything there, whatever it is.
For the weather.
Yeah.
Weather, which out there.
Okay, what's being seconded?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Anything else, Andreas?
Alright, great, now I guess that's it.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing so much heat on this.
Alright, sounds good, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
See ya.
Thank you.
Bye.
Still having a creamy at the dairy cream, I don't know, last week, and there was a few tires right next and the Winuski there, so no one picked them up.
No, the, the Meyer is dumpster that's been in there for three years, it is still there too.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Weem Sound Dog Park. Um, actually Cody brought it to my attention, we went down, looked at it. Situation down in, uh, where the rec field is down here with the ledge faced on the west side of the field. And, uh, you know, in the wintertime, the water gets down between the fractures of the ledge and it freezes and it moves it out a little bit more and it keeps breaking off and falling down. And, uh, we looked at it and there's a, a walkway to the dog park, runs behind the fence, small field fence, out to where the dog park's supposed to be and from what I've been hearing, nobody uses it anyway. And it's, it's a hazard if somebody had to walk it through there. Ledge fell down, they could be serious injured or killed. Another thing, um, they have problems with kids climbing around on that broken ledge and stuff that's falling down there and that's not safe. And, uh, what we talked about was the first, fence first starts, just to take a fence, go from that corner right up to the ledge so people can't go through there, so there would be no access to the dog park after that point and we keep kids and whatever, none of that. And, uh, we talked to Rob Townsend about it this morning, I did, and he was in agreement that probably the best solution, I mean, if you, first off, the ledge goes right back to the joint and property line, if you had to do something to angle the ledge like they've done along the interstate where it keeps falling in, you'd be way back on somebody else's land and, I mean, you'd be looking at a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars to even attempt to try to do that, cause you have to go back up and drill it, blow it out or hammer it out, it's just very tight, assuming costly. Um, so we talked about doing that as an alternative. And unless somebody else, Steve went out, looked at it with the town manager and I the other day, unless somebody's got any better ideas, the, the dog park is pretty much not being used, so now very little.
I've been over there coaching for almost ten years now and I've seen maybe one person, we, we, we don't allow dogs on the field so that when kids are running around, you're not stepping in dog poop. So we had the fence out a little bit so people with dogs could walk behind and go over. Uh, but I've, I've seen maybe, you know, in the past nine, ten years, maybe one person bring a dog and they're there for two seconds and it's not kept up, it's overgrown, and they turn it around and went back. So, I've never really seen anybody actually use it in that whole timeframe, I'm at that field quite a bit, so, um, it never was kept up.
Furthermore, it gives access to the back of the transfer station property where in the last five years, we've had numerous issues with kids out there doing stuff that, you know, kids do, but they shouldn't do there.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's under EPA rules for monitoring.
The landfill.
And whatnot, and we really can't have help here, so I, I don't think the dog park there is the best idea anyways, so.
Yeah, and now that the stump dump is under state permitting.
It's under state permit.
Um, you know, we've had issues with people going in, going in there and, um, causing problems in there, so. The best that would just be to do away with it.
Yeah, cause I've been there twice when that ledge has come down. It's, it's bad.
I mean, it's really, it's probably gonna, couple thousand dollars to extend that fence or ledge versus
Yeah.
Hundred thousand dollars to minimum to try to slow it so safe, you're still gonna have chunks, ledge and stuff, it ain't gonna be like it's smooth.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it seems like the best alternative right now, unless anybody's got any better ideas to deal with it.
The only thing I could say is, the, just, tired, excuse me, coach T-ball this year and a lot of kids throw baseballs deliberately over the fence. So maybe if there's a fence door put in so a coach can go get all the baseballs.
Yeah.
Cause kids love to have fun, let me tell you, they'll throw every ball that we own.
Yeah.
Deliberately just because it's fun.
Yeah, we gotta redo all that fencing anyways.
Yeah, it's just something so a coach can get in there, I'm not saying just to basically pick up the, not trash sporting goods that,
Yeah.
you know, kids are having fun throwing over the fence.
That was the plan, put in a couple, couple doors, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too, just something to collect the sporting goods that.
To be honest with you, it's, it's not town property to start with, it's owned by the new sports.
Yeah.
Town, town, town property starts back in the backside of it, sells like the goods.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if there was an agreement between W R S A and the town about the fence there way back when, we get to the dog park before anyways, but.
I think it was way back when Rob Townsend was president.
Okay, yeah.
So it was, anything was about.
Yeah.
So what do we actually looking to get approval of?
Do away with the dog park.
Do we do it away with the dog park?
And they can go forward and put the fence up if they want to, it's your choice.
Yeah, no, we're, I definitely, we're, we're putting fence back up anyways, so if we will, we'll definitely kinda go up the edge there so people stay off that ledge, yeah.
So I guess we do, we need a motion to, to the dog park.
I'll make a motion to eliminate the dog park from the line of sound.
I'll second it.
I'll second that.
What's being seconded? Any further discussion?
Is this something I need to abstain from, it's on, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, but.
No.
Okay.
It's your land anyways.
Okay.
Well, it's not yours, but it's a huge.
Right, yeah, okay.
I mean, yeah, just maybe, just for clarification, I mean, just, we got enough to make it, Matt.
Just for appearance, sure, okay.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay, that's all, so. Okay, road rehab, bid openings.
She's not complaining.
Oh, dog complaint, yep, dog complaints next one. That is from.
Patty Pierce.
Patty Pierce. That's the same situation we've got now, seriously.
Yeah.
So.
He lives out on, further out on Casino Road. So he can have a dog hearing at the next select board meeting and they can all be invited. Discuss the issue of dogs running at large.
There's leash law.
Um, so I can send a certified letter to, to Patty and to Sheila McGregor, Patty Sabans, stating that there will be a dog hearing to discuss the, um, complaint at the next select board meeting.
Okay.
They're all pretty good.
What, what's the, like, is that the current policy?
So you're the animal control board, so when somebody files a complaint in regards to um, an issue with dogs running at large.
Yeah.
Newsies dogs, um, they can request a hearing, which she said, you know, thank you for your attention to this matter, I'm willing to provide further details or speak at a meeting if necessary. Some of you guys can, you know, say that you wanna have a hearing and then they can save their cases and move forward.
And then we decide whether, what?
You decide, like you need to give her, I mean, if it comes down to that, you give restrictions to Sheila that she needs to keep her dogs contained, you know? Could be a fencing issue up there, you know, I don't know, but, uh,
Who's later?
You listen to both sides and you go from there.
Alright.
Make your decision. In the past, I mean, we had an issue up on Road Bear Road years ago where, um, a dog got loose and killed a neighbor's cat and and the, the town ended up, um, taking the dog. And the dog was, went and lived in another town on a farm and like spent life away from cats and everything was good, but.
I just don't know what our, like, authority.
Yeah, so you, you read the.
This was the first step, Harry said this later than you have to.
Yeah.
Public hearing.
Okay.
So it'll be part of the, um, on the agenda as a dog hearing.
Yep, okay. Do, do we have policy on all this?
Um, if you look at the animal ordinance, it, um, it states in there about the hearings, if that's anything, this actually should be in your book.
Okay, I'll check, that's why, yeah, I was just wondering if we have like a.
It's in your Bible.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't go through it, I just.
Yeah, if you look at your dog ordinance.
Okay, I'll go through it again.
So we need to have a motion to you to, set up public hearing?
Yeah, set up a public hearing for the next select board meeting.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second it.
What's being seconded, any further discussion?
The only thing I was gonna say, just hopefully they, cause it says at the bottom of the letter, I'm willing to provide further details, so if they have any evidence, hopefully.
Yeah, I will.
Suggest that they bring any evidence, pictures, photos, videos, I guess pictures, photos, same thing.
And I know that there is another neighbor up there that they also found, but does, they do have photos.
More people, she's certainly better.
Yep.
I'll make sure.
I will make sure that Patty invites the, the other neighbor to, to come too. Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright, can I?
Uh, road rehab, yes. There was bids for that drainage work that we discussed a few meetings ago.
First time's bad.
Drain up the center of the road to get the groundwater out, cause the mud season.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Oh, right on, on, uh, that one on Pleasant Street, yeah, one on Hebert Road and two or three on Flint Road.
It was put out the bid and it had to be everybody last Friday or four or something, mine is in there along with, on the others.
There's, there's three bids, do you know all?
So Shaggy's gonna open, I have no idea what's in them.
Okay.
You're accusing yourself, right?
Yeah.
You're accusing yourself.
You're recusing.
Yeah.
Okay, Shaggy would do mind opening those.
So first one is R M construction. And this was received on June third at twelve forty-four.
I'm gonna recuse myself as well because I volunteer with a member of that, I think owns R M, just to say, there's three people here, so. I'm accusing myself as well, it's okay.
Okay.
What do you all think? I don't know.
So, under.
Is it a hole for everything?
Okay, so. Oh, he did it all on its own.
Yeah, that's kinda what we asked.
Okay, so the total of Hebert Road, Pleasant Street, Flint Road one, Flint Road two, and Flint Road three, the total is eighty-three thousand, sixty-two dollars and forty-one cents.
Can you say that number one more time?
Eighty-three thousand, sixty-two dollars and forty-one cents.
Thank you.
It is Avery excavation. Okay, the total for Avery is eighty thousand, eight sixty-six. And this was received on June fifth at one P M. And the last one is Hebert excavation. That was received on June sixth, ten thirty A M. And that total for Hebert is seventy-four thousand, seven seventy-six.
Seven seven six?
Yep.
I'm really gonna be kid for something. So I'm really gonna be kid for something now.
Yes.
Now, assuming since you just got them, you haven't had a chance to go through, make sure they're all to the specs that we want.
They're, they are all to the specs, can we use our, our spec sheets?
Okay.
They all did, they're all the same.
And that, just keep in mind that the tailings, they go in the bottom of the hole, gravel, basically to fill up above the plate and fabric.
Yeah.
That's all coming out of our gravel pit, separate, the town is paying for them, the contractor's just paying the hauler for it. So, there, there's an additional cost to all of these, but it'll be the same basically for all of them.
Gotcha. This was, this was doing center drain, five-ish feet down.
Five feet down, yeah, four inch perforated by wrapped in fabric and then they'll back up. Basically, it's gonna be three feet, feet, five feet down, up, right down the center of the road in the middle of daylight.
Somewhere down.
Somewhere down the road into a proper, yeah, drainage area.
Okay. And this is just for doing the center drain?
This is to dig down the center, do the drainage.
Okay.
Let me make a motion to accept Hebert's bid.
I'll second.
You're in charge.
Huh?
Oh, I know, I know, I was just waiting, I was waiting, okay. Well, um, it's been, it's been, uh, proofed and, and seconded to, uh, accept Hebert excavation's bid, you got? Yeah. I guess we vote that, all, all in favor for Hebert excavation?
Alright.
Aye.
Any means? Any means? Good job.
Larry, you have to go.
I was trying to catch up with boss, leaving too much on deep.
That was intense.
I wasn't seventy-nine, dude, I just gotta deal with it.
I wish you hadn't been seventy-nine actively, because now I, now I, now I would have to listen to Mike Gabe, who wants to know what the hell is the difference in the beds.
He can come in and look at it.
He's gonna call me.
Okay.
Everybody had the same stuff to look at.
Actually, I'm really impressed with as close as they are.
Yeah.
They're a little hornier than I thought you would be, but.
Oh, yeah, if you had done that seventy-nine, that day, they all would have been.
He still would have got.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna have a nice part.
Next thing is, uh, loan paperwork for fire truck refurbishment.
And so backlash here when we agreed to have Harab do the refurbish. The select board agreed to borrow a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a period of one year to cover the additional expenses that weren't part of the, uh, coming out of the equipment reserve. So I have the bank paperwork and it's at five percent for three hundred and sixty days. At a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so.
Seventy-five hundred?
Huh?
Seventy-five hundred?
Seventy-five hundred? What do you mean seventy-five hundred? Oh, seventy-five hundred a month.
For the year.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I mean, it's been approved, but I leave the formal and Patty signed the paperwork.
So this is to pay for the re, the refurbishment?
This is the balance, the hundred and twenty-seven thousand, yep.
Let me ask, let me ask you this question. With all this money we've had come back from FEMA and that stuff, is your money somewhere that we could, just certain that we could use for a year? If we really got the bind and needed it, we could go borrow it. Why pay seventy-five hundred dollars if we don't need to?
So we had this discussion a few years ago.
Why not, they wanted to take out the ambulance fund.
That was sitting there and we couldn't do that.
I know, that was dedicated ambulance fund money, I'm just asking if we have some other stuff.
FEMA money is dedicated highway money. The fire department's under the general fund, FEMA, all of FEMA money was under the highway fund.
So it's, it's all used up, fine. I'm just saying if there's some.
Well, I mean, I mean.
If there's some, if there's some way.
We're reimbursed for everything that we, we spent for the repairs, so. There's really no FEMA money that's.
I know, I'm just asking that question, if we don't, if we didn't need to waste seventy-five hundred, why do it? Or half of it, or whatever. But if we. Either way, I'm just trying to look after, see a little bit of it.
I mean, this is the way that it was approved, that we would borrow the hun, the difference.
I just know when all the flood was going on, we found all kinds of money, it happened before, we ever got a penny back from anybody, so.
Well, we did borrow two hundred and.
Right, and we spent two million.
Twenty-three thousand dollars.
We spent two million.
As soon as that money came back in from FEMA, we paid that back, we paid that back early.
Oh, I guess that was just the question I had out there, if there's a pod out there that's got money in it that's just making two percent away.
I apologize, I'm just gonna refuse myself back over there, sorry. I got the seat with the crowd tonight.
So the, the hundred and twenty-seven that we, we spent already?
You're spending it tonight.
Okay, so this is that, okay.
And that's already been allocated earlier.
Yeah.
So. We have to do the hundred and fifty though, even though it's twenty-twenty, just because of the interest or? Right. Okay. So you just need a motion to go ahead and sign the paperwork. Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to go ahead and sign the paperwork.
I'll second the motion.
Motion being seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item is, uh, deputy, deputy health officer appointment. We have some on this.
I didn't get a letter. I said there was no letter.
No, because I had to get, I had to download the form and, um, so, um, in the past, we had a deputy health officer. But we haven't had one in a couple of years. But I contacted the health department and asked if we could have one appointed. Jasmine Cool Yard is willing to be the deputy health officer, so we have a backup in place. She was the health officer for quite a few years when she was on the select board and was chairman of the select board, so. She's very knowledgeable and very good at the job.
So she knows what she's getting into?
She's, she's willing, yeah, she knows what she's getting into and she's willing to do it, so. It would be helpful on my part to have a backup.
As long as she wants to do it, that's all about it, okay?
She does.
Because somebody wanted to do that job, you better take it.
Yeah.
She's very good at it.
I've had to do it before, it ain't much. Anybody, uh, make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to have Jasmine Cool Yard be the deputy health officer.
And this will go into effect July one.
Okay. Now, do we have a current one now, or no?
Uh, Courtney Wade is the, is the health officer.
But she's not the one to do it anymore.
Um, she, she's good until, um, June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six.
Okay.
But this will be the backup.
Okay, so she is the actual health officer?
Yeah.
And they're state appointed, right?
Yes, the board recommends in the state of white.
Did I hear a second on that?
Yep.
Motion being seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay, we do have to go into executive session, right? For legal issues, so we'll take, uh. There's no old business.
Old, no.
So we're gonna take a brief, brief session. You want me to do this, all right. Scott?
No, I'm good.
You good? I think everybody said whatever they wanted to say.
Yeah.
Anybody else got anything they wanna say for me? Yeah, go ahead.
Since the flood a couple of years ago, the water comes down Lighthouse Hill toward my place along the end. End of the road, I did, the banks are high, the fireplace foot run off. It keeps washing the class four road out, and I have to fix it after every rainstorm. But I have to come and see Jackie to get a permit to do work in the town road. It, it, it don't make any sense, uh, if the town isn't taking care of it, I have to take care of it because I live on the road. Uh, when we had the flood, the road washed out enough so it plugged the cove. This is a drop down onto the class four road, and it's been two years and every time we get a rainstorm now, the water comes up and runs across the road. I was told that it was gonna get fixed, and it's been two years and nothing's been fixed about it. But it, it, it's. I'd like to have permission, when it does wash out, that recent rainstorm that washed it off, that I can take a bucket of gravel that I have or stones and go up and, and fix the road without having to come downtown and get the town manager's permission to, uh, fix the road. I'm the only one that lives out there, so.
I understand where you're coming from, totally, but we also have issues, like you, you may do an excellent job, no issues whatsoever, but there's some people who's not familiar with that type of work, it can cause problems for David joining landlords or, you know, running water different places where you shouldn't be or. So that's the reason why we have people come in to get permits, just to make sure, so the road foreman can go look at what you want to do. And I suggest that just get, get the permission in and meet with Dave up there and look at it and, you know, if he's just doing the same thing each time something. I would say you wouldn't need a permit to keep going doing the same thing, but.
Well, if, that cove don't get fixed, one of these days we're gonna get a good storm again and it's gonna wash the road out and we're gonna be stranded on the other side, the fire department, ambulance can't get over there. My wife and I, my wife's probably seventy years old.
Are you, are you aware of the fund we have for class four roads, you can get a thousand dollars?
It's on the class four road.
Right, but you're aware we have a fund set up for class four roads where you can apply for a thousand dollars?
But I heard that you guys stopped that program.
No.
No.
That program still exists.
There's five thousand dollars in it every year, it's approved every year, you have to submit a letter. If you get, if you get approved for up to a thousand dollars, you have to pay for the trucking for materials.
Right.
Then you can't reapply for five years, that's what, that's the way the highway policy is.
Now, what kind of material is this, is it crushed gravel or?
You can, yeah, it's, it's a thousand dollars worth of material. You can go to Pike and they'll bill, you tell Pike to bill me and put class four road, Lighthouse Hill on the purchase order, they'll send it to me. You have to pay for the trucking yourself, but you can get a thousand dollars worth of, of material.
But it. It don't make any sense for the town to put gravel on that road when every time it rains, it's gonna come down through and wash it down. The, the, like I said, the both sides of the road from George Kennedy's back towards mine, the banks are that high and the water runs in the road. Uh, I've been up here twenty-three years and the town said they were going to come up and dig ditches there and they never did. The, the town hasn't done anything to Lighthouse Hill in the twenty-three years I've been up there. And it, it, it don't make any sense to me to go and get gravel and pay somebody to truck it, put it in there, when the next rainstorm, it's gonna wash it down into the road. It, it's, there's gotta be some ditch system up there, uh, or it's just a waste of the taxpayer's money to buy gravel and put it in there.
Is the ditching on the class three section or the class four section?
The class, it all starts on the class three and then it runs right down into the class four. And then it goes off, when you drive down in there, then it goes off to the right-hand side and it plucks the cove up. Now, right now, there's probably over a foot of water at the upper end of that cove. And when I first moved up there, uh, this time of year, that little stream, you'd be lucky if it was three inches of water in that little stream.
But you didn't get the rain we get now.
What's that?
You, you didn't get the rain we gotten now.
I know, but we didn't have problems until the flood.
Right. The problem, the problem with what you're talking about, the ditching, I've been up there and looked at numerous times, from George Kennedy's down the hill, you got a bank that tall to George's lawn, and trees all like that.
No, he cut them all off, he had Steve Hart.
Yes, he got some of them, but it's still.
A lot of them because he was told they were gonna come up and dig ditches there.
Yeah, I don't know who told him that, but the, the road is class three road, but it's only twenty feet wide. And you start trying to put a ditch in that twenty-foot road and you got banks that are six feet tall over on this side and over on this side there, you know, four feet tall.
Okay, that information.
You can't get a ditch in there. I mean, you'll be walking, you'll be having the edges of it, but it narrows out the road, then when you go up the plateau, the plateau gets soft and all, you just, you're putting everything already in that ditch. There's room for improvement. And we've, we've been working in that way. And that road is on our question. Because we have problems with the other end with two, we're. We back over now. Plug that cove up.
Right, because the, the, our biggest concern is that cove. Because all that gravel was came down there and plucked the end of that cove.
That cove is on the class four section of the road. And if we go up there and change that cove for you, the next time that the road with class four road's gonna want us to go and change his cove and we don't do that.
There's nothing to say that you can't use a thousand dollars to replace a cove, it doesn't have to be for gravel.
What's that?
There's nothing to say that you have to use that thousand dollars for gravel, it could be used.
If you use it by a cove.
If we put a cove in.
Right.
Or ditching or whatever.
Well, it.
See, like Dave just said, we had quite a lot of miles of class four road, people building way out on the end of it, all looks good until winter comes, as mud season comes, floods come.
To replace that cove, how would that work, the town buy the cove and I pay to have it put in or?
No, it's just whatever the town. I, I don't know what size cove it needs, I haven't seen it, but.
Two-foot cove.
Two-foot cove, so it's, it's gonna be what, thirty feet, maybe forty? They probably pretty much used up your thousand dollars right there for the cove.
Right now, it's a stone cove on another road. And like I said, we're going to get a storm and it's gonna wash the road out, it's gonna be stranded on the other side.
My suggestion would be to, they could play with road foreman and meet up there and find out what you need and come up with a plan and then come back and apply for the thousand dollars for a cove or however you figure it, wanna do it, but that's, that's the limit we can go, the way the highway policy is. Whether for you or anywhere else that comes in.
Well, it'd be nice if I could get other people that live on the road up there on the class four to go in and help me do something like that, but they've all told me they're not putting a dime into that road. All they got is property up there.
Well, I think that it had been five years and up until, just a year or so ago, the town made it that you could only apply every five years for the, for a certain road, and somebody up there, I won't say name, has applied for a class four road fund and every year for either that road or another road that they own here in town, or they're on. And that material that they bought for a certain road not going to that road went somewhere else. That's when they talked about shutting that class four road fund down. But there's enough of a need for it because you guys, you know, you don't get the maintenance that somebody living on the class three sector gets. Yet you're still taking property taxes down, so they kept it open and now the only stipulation on it is I have to make sure that you use that money where you apply for it.
Right.
And so whether you bought a cove with it and you could buy it through the town and pay the town price for it, which is a lot cheaper if you went up to, say, off a cove and use that money for that, um, and then you just have to have somebody dig it instead of you place.
But then if, if I go to the town and get the cove, I'd hire somebody to dig it, put it in. So then I've gotta come and see the town manager, get permit to do that.
Yeah, because you're working in the town right away.
Right.
And, and you're not being singled out, everybody has to apply for a permit.
Right.
Well, and seeing that, that's the thing that, not my wife and I, because, uh, I, I came down that last big rainstorm and asked for permission to fix the road, but every fall, when Bailey comes up, they cut their firewood. They break the road, they're loaded, and nothing is ever said about that.
Well, we didn't know that.
Yeah, we're not aware.
We're not aware of it.
Well, you're, you're aware of it.
We're now, yeah.
But, um, it, it's, in, in the past, we've had the water coming down from up on the other side and it flooded at the end of our driveway. So I talked to Jackie about that and she said, just put a little water bar up above when it starts flooding out. Well, I put a water bar in and everybody that owned property appeared from up and filled back in, they didn't want the water bar there. So, uh, it, it's, I don't win the situation living out there.
Yeah.
So, now.
Well, like I said, we, we are actually gonna go up like that and do some work and raise the road up because there's nothing for material there to grade anymore. because there's nothing for material there to grade anymore from the, from the fire.
Mailboxes break down to the line.
Right, and the ditching down around by Dave Taylor's is a problem all the time now.
Yeah.
And so we are, it is on our list to get up there, and we're working that way.
And at the end of the Lighthouse Hill, it washes out every storm.
Yeah, and plugs that cove up every time.
Yeah.
And we're just gonna continue. This year, the highway department is gonna focus pretty primarily on drainage projects, because we definitely keep getting rain more and more, more and more every year. And I don't see it stopping, so, you know, we need to start fixing some of these drainage issues that we're having, that we're going back time after time after time and fixing the same, same area. So that's, you know, that's what we're working on. We're working on pulling the guardrails up so the water can get underneath them like it's supposed to instead of running down the road. Cleaning the ditches up so the water runs off the road. Getting the sites pulled in, and, and South and South Hill is one of the major ones on the list this year, and continue right up and up around the border of Lighthouse. And when we get up there, you know, I'll see if there's something we can do, because if we can get the right side from Steve's driveway down and a little ditch down through there, and even if it goes across within that boxes, you know, it'd just be a little sway out, not really a ditch.
Yeah, there, there's a little.
Yeah.
The spot by the mailbox, because the road.
Okay, can I just ask a couple? So what's your house, if you don't mind me asking, what's your house number?
Pardon me?
What's your house number on?
Six twelve.
Six twelve, so you're at the very end of the road?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm looking at the nine-one-one map. So it's showing your house is class-three?
No.
Well, according to the nine-one-one map, it is.
Yeah, nine-one-one said my mailbox is my house.
Yeah, and his mailbox is a.
We get packages, they drop them off at the mailbox, because nine-one-one says that's where, not nine-one, but GPS says that's where our house is. And so we've been fighting with.
Yeah, it's across the street from her, and she comes in.
We're, we're wrong. The class-four road, it's ninety, ninety-two feet.
Okay.
Down where you're coming from, where my house.
So my question would be, because we're looking at Henry Road on the.
There's the control, it's the name of the road.
My goodness, my brother's bad. Flint Road, we're looking at trying to get them a new cove. Because their, every time theirs floods, it just washes away, and that seems what's happening with yours, and.
Well, it's different. That one blows out every time we have a major storm.
Yeah.
And it's blown out at least eight times, I know, since two thousand thirteen, and Mr. B just puts back in again.
So my question is, is the flood that's happening on your road affecting the class-three version of the road?
The flood is starting on the class-three, coming down onto the class-four.
Okay.
And it plugged up the coves, and now the water is going over the road every time we hear rain.
The class-four road, not the class-three?
The class-four road.
And I just wanted to make sure we're doing the correct thing, because we have a class-four road that we're helping off Flint, and then we have another class-three road that I'm helping, that's.
We haven't done anything on that yet. We're trying to get.
Well, I know, but that's my point, that we're trying to help them.
Because that's gonna be a major project.
Okay.
But there, there's no sense in changing the cove if all that water's gonna keep coming down there, and like Dave said, we're getting more and more water every year out of the sky, and it's just flooding up here.
Okay. We have money left in the class-four road fund?
Yes.
Okay. My suggestion is you and Dave get together between now and next meeting. If you want to apply for a thousand dollars of that class-four road fund, get a letter into Jackie before next meeting so that we can put it on the agenda. So you wanna like to have it like the Wednesday before the meeting?
Yeah.
So, it's eight July first, get it to her. Our meeting's like the ninth or something like that. Whatever it is.
Well, I appreciate the thought.
Right.
Haven't something done about replacing that cove, but.
But that's the best, it's the best we can do in a class-four. Not, not because it's you, or if anybody walks in that door, it's the same deal for everybody, so. We only got a limited amount of funds, we try to help everybody out a little bit, you know? So.
So it seems like there's a bit still the fact that even if that cove gets replaced, the road's gonna wash down there and it's gonna plug up the road.
Well, you and Dave talk about it, and if he comes back in next meeting with something different idea, we'll talk about it, but till then.
I need, I need the, the letter by July ninth. I need the letter by July ninth, walking class-four road funding. That's a Wednesday.
So you just type up a letter to you saying, I'd like to apply for a thousand dollars of.
For the Lighthouse Hill road, yeah.
And just get that to Jackie.
Very simple. Hand right up.
You don't have to use it right away. I mean, you've got a year to use it, so we'll, we'll come up with something.
Okay, so now we're gonna need to vote to take a recess and go into executive session?
Yes.
Motion on that?
I can motion second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone for coming.
Here's your cove in your bag.
Okay, I make motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second that.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That's a wrap.